Workshop meeting. And first, under admin matters, I am passing around right now an updated resolution for the bullying prevention month, just so that you're aware, the first paragraph was deleted, so I'm passing the new revised resolution around. Next on the agenda is bylaws regarding our regular school board meeting dates. We were going to have a discussion about this. Do we have an update from admin on this?
What is Dr. Spence?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
For the regular school board meeting dates, was there?
Well, yeah, so.
Diane's right here.
She's right over there. I was looking right behind you where you usually are. Yes. So Diane is going to talk to you about that. We have taken a look at the calendar. She's going to talk to you about what the calendars might look like, also what some of the impact on that would be with the budget calendar, and we'll answer any questions that you have about that.
So first, we're going to start with budget options that Harold talked to, well, we talked about last time, that there might be some impact on the budget timeline, because there are three options here that he's proposed. The first one would be no change to what was presented on September 19th. The second one would be a change, but it would require at least one special school board meeting, and only three workshops would be held instead of our normal four. And then the third option would be, you would have to hold two special school board meetings, and you would still be able to conduct four workshops. So that's the budget options that would need to be placed into consideration for any changes. Mr. Hunsaker is here to answer the questions on that timeline.
And these are all?
So option one is the current with no changes. And the reason that in option three, you'd require two special meetings would be that we would be skipping the, what now would be the February 6th. Basically, the city can't take the budget from the board a week later. And that would be what would be required if we didn't keep our budget timeline where it is now. And so in order to keep our budget timeline on track, we would need to have the board adopting on March 6th, which is when you'd be scheduled to do that now, which in this case would be a special meeting required to adopt that, so we can get it to the city on time. The reason to hold, or the reason you have an option two and three.
Go ahead.
The reason you have an option two or three is just if you wanted to make sure that you had the same number of workshops that you have now, which you would have to have a special meeting on February 6th to do that. Otherwise, you could go without that and just reduce the number of workshops by one.
It's, to me, it's kind of depends on, you know, how the budget hearings are going, or how our workshops are going with budget. I mean, sometimes, last year was complicated, and I felt like we needed, some years, we don't need as many. So it sort of depends on, yes, Ms. McLeod?
So if we schedule four meetings, we don't need one, can't we just adjust the schedule accordingly? So wouldn't it make sense to pick option three with one built in, knowing that we might be able to do away with one if we don't need it?
That's what I think.
We could do that.
And that's the, I mean, that's how it's always been done, right? So we have them as needed, and if they're not being needed, they're pulled.
And they're still basically, February doesn't change for us. It's all the other months with just doing the second and fourth. I mean, so this is.
Well, February would change, because.
No, we're still meeting on the 6th, on the 13th, on the 20th, on the 27th, and on the 6th. The dates don't actually change as, if option one is what we're doing, we're still coming the same days as in option three.
Yeah, just naming.
But we might could throw one out.
Correct. And you're just having a special call meeting on the 6th of each month in order to have a formal meeting where you would take a vote.
But we have a plan, that being anyway.
So here is what the schedule would look like, not with the second and fourth posted, but just so you can see the calendar and some of the highlighted numbers are those for city council meetings. And then the red are holidays, and then we have graduations, and then we have also spring breaks that are in there as well. And as you can see, from January through June of 2018, we've already somewhat approved the schedule to be reaffirmed in January. And you'll see that some of those months are already on the second and fourth Tuesday and don't conflict with city council.
Oh, okay.
For various reasons, whether it be because graduations was one item, and then our spring break caused it. So when you have five Tuesdays, it's great in a month, but when you don't, then we kind of start backing up. So this is what it's like empty. If you go into the one where you have the second and fourth Tuesday, we've got some variations on that, because we run into a problem in June of 2019 with graduations. So if you do the first and third like we usually do, then that's going to impact what you do in May, April, and March. And February also. Or you could do, this is the one where it is, the second and fourth, and make another arrangement for that June 2019 conflict.
Yeah, just leave it out a week.
City Council, their formal meeting is on which? Is it the first or second meeting of March?
Second and fourth, I'm sorry, first and third.
First and third.
First and third.
The second and fourth, they have their workshop.
Except for July and December, it's the first and second.
First and thirds, so the sixth is a formal meeting of March, sorry.
March 6th of 2018, yes, would be.
And that's, that's the day that we would be trying to adopt our budget.
Correct.
So we'd have to have a special meeting on that date anyway.
Right. Well, if we were trying to avoid people having to choose, and that's a pretty big vote.
Yeah. Well, to me, in the past, February, I've just always marked every Tuesday in February, anyway.
Exactly.
I mean, I just, maybe I've just, you know, said, okay, Tuesdays in February, our budget, period. That's what we're working on. So I'm not even worried about February. I'm not worried about the budget. We're going to be here anyway, if we need it. Anybody else want to weigh in on this? Mr. Edwards?
Regardless of what we do with the budget calendar, I personally kind of slept through the January dates. Having the second and 16th is totally dysfunctional. The meeting on January 2nd would be maybe 20 minutes, because the staff would have not had an opportunity to do anything for 10 days. And it's just kind of silly to have a meeting then. I think we've, I'm not in favor of going to the second and fourth, overall, for why? Myself, and I know there are some senior staff that are involved in the community in other ways, I have a meeting on the second Tuesday, and, you know, and a lot of the organizations is sort of shuffled around, you know, schedules, and so I might have to give up some stuff, you know, which is a bummer, you know?
It would be okay.
Well, it's, you know, I tag team with Sharon, and I'm on the Parks and Rec Foundation Board, which leads to second Tuesday. So, you know, if we were permanently on the second Tuesday, I would have to say, hey, I'm sorry every time. But I mean, from a functional standpoint, it really doesn't matter. I think the calendar ought to reflect opportunities to get together and do productive work. And I don't think the issue of conflicts, people having to pick and choose between meetings is as big or as important as, I mean, again, I'm just talking, having looked at it for like, you know, quite a while, it's only popped up like maybe three or four times in 18, 19 years, where people says, oh, my gosh, you know? So I don't think that's a huge thing. And as far as us going over there on non-school stuff to talk to them, we probably ought to be having our spouse or our, if it's an organization, somebody else in the organization. Once again, it's kind of hard, you know, you sort of surrender your right to go appeal. I mean, you can't, you know, none of us can stand in front of this city council and not be, and not wear our school board hat. It's sort of like going into, sort of like going into a school building, you know? You've got your school board hat on, even though you want to be mom or grandpa or something like that. So anyway, my philosophy, I'm, I, my feeling over, you know, even on this last meeting, you know, I think there's a fairly good consensus for wanting to go to two and four. That's fine. I certainly don't object to it, but I don't see the overall need for it. So, but if anybody else is more comfortable to four. But specifically in January.
Yeah.
I don't want to meet on January 2nd.
Me either.
Yeah, and I would agree. I agree with the January 2nd point, however, I think it's very important to de-conflict with city council formal meetings, just for citizens that want to come to both. I know quite a few people that want to come to both. So I'm flexible on what that is, but I think we need to de-conflict.
Ms. McLeod?
Sometimes when we have joint meetings with the city council, I feel rushed, and that the mayor is pushing us through. And if we were to do it on the second and fourth, that means that's when we do the joint meetings, which means they would only be having workshops, which means that they wouldn't be in a hurry to get to their formal meeting. And so maybe that would allow for additional time for us to have conversation when we're having those joint meetings. Just throwing that out there. But I always do feel rushed.
I see your point on that. I agree with that sometimes. Sometimes that's happened. Anybody else want to weigh in on this? So are, do we have a consensus that we're ready to move forward with this?
Maybe the question, Madam Chair, is that should we ask, is there anybody on the board who simply can't do it because of other obligations?
Well, that's true. And, I mean, really and truly, and other than, you know, Mr. Edwards has already indicated that he does have a meeting, and Ms. Felton?
Well, but school board, I, you know, in case of the conflict, I've always, school board trumped anything and everything, except maybe a serious thing.
Right. Ms. Felton, how do you feel?
And it does, school board does trump everything, pretty much, with my schedule. Like you said, I already block out February anyway, it's a whole month for school board meetings.
Right. So back to the question, do we have a consensus to move forward with this? Can I see a show of hands, just so we know? Okay.
What about January 2nd?
I think.
Yeah, what about January 2nd?
Well, right now, we don't have January 2nd. The highlighted is the city council meetings.
Oh.
Already approved.
All right, okay.
So for January through June, we've already approved with some variations, which, you know, again, we're going to always have that issue in June because of graduation.
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, because we don't know why.
Spring break, so it's going to be an issue.
Ms. Alexander, and I talked about this earlier today, and I said, you know, there have been times that we've had, excuse me, a Wednesday meeting because of elections, or first day of school, et cetera. There's no reason why in June of 2019, we couldn't even have a Monday evening meeting instead of a Tuesday evening, because it would conflict with the graduation on the 11th. I mean, we can plan for that ahead, so that we could have that, that meeting and not be back-to-back with May. So technically, in January, we're scheduled, currently now, our January is January 9th and 23rd, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's what's on the books now?
And then what we could do is we'll change February to second and fourth, and March to second and fourth. April's already there, May's already there, and then again in June, we've got the conflict with the graduation.
Okay, so the next step, if we're in agreement to move ahead with this, would be to send this to policy, to the Policy Review Committee, and have them write the wording, and then they'll bring it to us with information. Are you all right with that, Ms. Frus?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I think that that's covered that topic. Yes, Ms. McLeod?
No, I was just going to suggest that, at the end of the year, and why don't we just go ahead and suggest that the meetings for June are the 5th and the 26th? It eliminates the conflict if we switch to the second and fourth. And, but we have so many recognitions we're trying to do at the meetings before school's out, so that may help that out. And then I'll give, after graduation, the staff a breather the next week with not having to look at us on the 19th. And so that, take it easy, right? So, so there's no reason why we couldn't, you know, we adjust things in time.
We do, we do, yes, we do.
We're okay with that, that fourth Tuesday, June 25th. You don't need it on the Wednesday.
It's the 18th, June 2019. That's the consensus.
Oh, in June 2019.
It's 19.
I know, I saw that. Well, no, it would be, if we switch June to, this coming June, to the second and fourth, but you're saying we've already approved those dates, so we're not, I need to know when I'm.
We're not going to switch that.
Yeah, okay.
So June is already taken care, we already are meeting on the 5th and the 19th, and that doesn't conflict.
Which is the first and third, so that's not being changed.
Right. That's, that's not being changed.
This will go into effect as of July?
If that's what you want.
Really, all I care about is that I have a schedule ahead of time, so I know not to travel out of town for work. So, yeah.
So this will actually go into effect in February, right, if we change the bylaws?
Yeah, February.
And then it would be the second and fourth, where the red squares.
Totally get that. No, not, but totally look at June of 18th. We have the first and the fourth to go around graduation, is what you're saying.
Right.
Okay, I'm okay.
Right.
So for 2019, we'll do the 5th, Wednesday the 5th, or did you want to do the 10th, Monday the 10th?
We could do the 4th.
The 4th and the 25th.
June of 2019, oh, I see. Instead of the 11th and the 25th, we could do the 10th and the 25th. Is that all right with you all?
I think that's unfair of the staff with graduations that week. That's asking them to be there every single night of the week, that week.
I think it's, there's a merit to trying to stay on Tuesdays.
Yeah.
So you want to stick with the 4th and the 18th in June?
You can't do the 4th.
Fourth and 25th.
Can't do the 4th.
You can't do the 4th if we're meeting on the 28th of May.
Oh, that was, that was the conflict. We're meeting on the 28th of May. That's our regular meeting. That would be our regular meeting. So a week later, we wouldn't really want to meet again. So that's why I suggested go to the 10th. That would give us still almost two weeks, and that way, we would be able to have a meeting. I think it's important that we have that June 10th meeting, because there are so many recognitions that we do for students during that time of year.
And typically, a lot of appointments happening at that time.
Yes. So we really do need a meeting in June, and like you said, the 4th would not be a good time to meet, because we're already meeting on the 28th.
Do we need two weeks between meetings, if there's that much stuff there?
Well, I could chime in on that.
I'm hearing maybe not.
It's about how we give notice and prepare your packet. We don't have time to do that.
Okay, that's the why. Okay, thank you.
Right. So the 10th and the 25th, would that be okay with you all? Okay. All right, that's good.
Thank you, Diane.
So, next step is policy review.
We're so much fun.
I'm passing this around, and it has to do with the National School Board Association Annual Conference, and also the VSBA Conference in Williamsburg. So this is one of those things, if you're thinking about going. Dr. Spence, do we have any presentations that we're doing for the National School Board Association this time that you are aware of?
Not for NSBA.
Not for NSBA. So we will not be having any presentations from our.
We have applied for several Magno awards, so we won't know that until we get a little closer.
Right. Okay, good.
What are the dates again?
Some, well, I'll pass this around. The annual convention, you know, is November 15th through 17th, but actually, the 16th is the big day that everybody usually goes, on Thursday. And NSBA is April 7th through 9th. But there's also on here an NSBA Equity Symposium on February 3rd, and an NSBA Advocacy Institute on February 4th through 6th. So, anyway, I'll pass these around. I think.
I think the dates, the locations are on my.
But they are. Washington DC for those first two, and San Antonio is for the annual conference. So I'll pass this around.
The April's a little.
Well, this is, the reason why we're asking now is because there is signups available now, and I believe you can, it's, it's possible that you can sign up headed now, as of now, and get confirmed, so.
Lodging opportunities are better now for those that are sure they're going.
It's during spring break.
Just one, before we get into the school calendar update, one relative to this, to the agenda tonight, so the budget calendar is on action. We'd like to move it to information, and take it off action, not take action on it tonight, until we get squared away with what's going to happen to the other calendar.
Okay.
So if you guys are okay with that, you'll just have to do that at the dais.
Right. So we'll have to. And my next topic of conversation here has to do with amending our agenda this evening, because we're going to be, Ms. Weems, this is the time where we're going to talk about, Ms. Weems has, would like to be able to run for Chair of the Tidewater Region for VSBA, and she has brought copies of her paperwork that she's about ready to file, and she needs our vote. So she just have a majority of vote for this. So we will be voting on the dais, and it will become Action C item if we amend the agenda tonight.
Action B, since we're making a budget.
Oh, B is being taken off?
They'll just go to information.
Okay. So, Ms. Weems, if you have copies of those.
Yeah, I just have five now, because for some reason, my printer at home decided to skip every page. But Diane, if y'all need, I'm just going to read exactly what I'm submitting to the committee, because that's what we have to do. If you're running for Vice Chair, you don't have to submit it, but if you're running for Chair, you have to submit some bio and some information on a separate piece of paper. So, Ms. Anderson, I'd just like to read this out loud, and then if y'all want to read it over dinner again, or have any questions, you can certainly ask me.
Go ahead.
And then I guess, I don't know if this is a cami question, but Ms. Felton, I understand it's on the nominating committee, is it okay if she's in here when I read this?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I didn't want to get you in trouble.
Taint anything, yeah.
Taint anything, or get me in trouble. Okay. Todd, to the Tidewater Regional Nominating Committee, "Thank you for serving on this committee and for considering my application for nomination as the Tidewater Regional VSBA Chair. As the mother of five children who all graduated from Virginia schools, I am a longtime advocate for public education. Before being elected to the school board, I served as president and numerous other officers on PTSA boards, served on several planning commissions, and volunteered tirelessly in our schools. I have taught and coached at ODU, and a few years ago, completed my credentials for a provisional license in special education that led to two long-term stints in the Norfolk Public Schools. I have served on the Virginia Beach School Board for the past 16 years. For close to a decade, I was Chair of the Legislative Committee, making numerous trips to Richmond, local legislative offices, VSBA conferences, and meetings in Charlottesville to advocate for local, state, and VSBA issues and policies. In the last two years, I have worked extremely close with both the Governor and AG's office and our region regarding the opioid epidemic, and have traveled statewide speaking on the topic. These experiences have afforded me good working relations with many lawmakers on both sides of the aisle. If elected as regional chair, I would also like to see more collaborative regional efforts towards some much-needed initiatives. My ideas follow. Number one, regional cost savings. Much like what many school boards and city council or supervisors are doing in regard to combining resources and services, I think we should apply this strategy at the regional level. For instance, large purchases such as buses or textbooks, et cetera, could be combined regionally to get better cuts in cost. Two, updates in curriculum. This could also be shared throughout the region to save both time and money. A perfect example is that our additional ramped-up health curriculum on opioid education now embedded in our Virginia Beach health classes. And number three, legislative meetings. Many of our larger divisions in our region have legislative committees, consultants, and regular contact with their legislators, but many don't. We could have a regional legislative event to save money and time for us, but most importantly, for our legislators who are bombarded with meetings. I believe that hearing from all 18 divisions in the Tidewater Region with a unified agenda will make an impact. Of course, as Chair, I will organize our annual meeting and will attend regional and state meetings. I will set up a quarterly conference call to the 18 school board chairs to both get input and give out pertinent VSBA information. I am motivated to do a good job and now have time to serve. Admittedly, I attended more events in my first 12 years than my last four. I would like to offer a brief explanation. Four years ago, one of our daughters died, and we became instant parents to our granddaughter. My focus has been on her well-being and providing consistency to her everyday life. To do so, I intentionally pulled back from some of the local events, and especially out-of-town workshops and conferences, et cetera. Now our granddaughter is thriving and is in first grade, thus allowing me time to commit, thus allowing me the time and efforts to commit to serve in this role. Thanking you in advance for considering my application." So that's my background. This is just for the chairman to sign. Also, we had to fill out what we've been involved in. Last year, I was voted as Vice Chairman of the Region until, last year through the present time. Also, it's got a box for, and again, I can copy these, I will be, by the time we vote, a moderator at a conference, a presenter at a conference, and a General Assembly Congressional testimony at VSBA. Last year, I attended a regional spring network forum, as well as I have attended Legislative Advocacy Conference and the Annual Convention for the last two years. They just went back for two years. So, and then recognition last year was 15, 19 credits for the year. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, and if you want copies of this, I'll be glad to print more out, or I can pass these out, and you can mull over them at dinner. But I would appreciate your support. I think it would be very good to have, you know, one of the best school systems in the state to have representative at the VSBA level. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Weems. So unless there's objection, that we will, we will vote, and it will be Action Item B on the agenda. So we will have to amend the agenda to include that. Does anyone else have anything to share this evening?
I do.
Ms. Holt?
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. We are one of the foremost school systems in the state, and certainly in the Tidewater area. So I know that other school boards do look to us for leadership, but it does seem appropriate that we should have somebody, you know, representing us on the state level and even on the national level. But I feel very strongly about that. But I feel very strongly it should be the right person. I read the application. The application asked about what you have done in the last two and three years. Well, I've been on the school board for seven years, so I know what people have accomplished in the last seven years. So we need to find a candidate who has demonstrated active and earnest participation at the local, the state, and even the national level. Today, I've heard some words, I've heard some words of praise in the past, but they ring hollow if they are not supported by deeds. Right here in our community, there were dozens of opportunities for engagement, and it just means showing up. Simple things, like accepting an invitation to observe the progress of technologies like we had tech walks in the schools, joining a tour of the Health and Science Academies in Bay Side, award ceremonies, recognizing our employees, our students, our teachers, even custodians. There were dozens of opportunities. Show up. This board knows them all, so I won't enumerate them. But moving on, every year, the SBCA State Convention is held in Williamsburg in November, and it's an easy 45-minute drive away from here. But in the seven years that I've been on the board, there have been some people who have never attended one conference. True, the policy does not mandate attendance, but if you aspire to a position of leadership, wouldn't you show up? And again, in the spring, there's a yearly regional meeting, and that's our district, the Tidewater District. There are 18 different school boards in that area. And the director of this regional area is the very position that we are discussing right now. The appointment affords the director a very broad and extensive audience. Imagine the potential for havoc this one critical falsifying person could create there. So in conclusion, I will enthusiastically support the application, excuse me, for a second here, of a candidate who is active in our school community and is supportive of decisions made by our own school board, and is willing to work as a team member. This person would not publicly criticize the 181-day calendar, giving teachers more time for professional development, and suggesting that our schools are headed for mediocrity. and suggesting that our schools are headed for mediocrity. This person would support the grading policy that was approved in a vote by the board last September, giving authority and decision-making to individual schools that empowers teachers and not write an op-ed piece in the newspaper accusing the board of making students unwitting experimental subjects. This person would support full implementation of all-day kindergarten, affording early educational advantages to our littlest ones. This person would be above-board and transparent in every future business relation and not try to skirt the letter of the law. These are the actions that I will consider when I cast my vote, and I hope that my colleagues will be fair and equitable and honest in casting their vote as well. Thank you, Mrs. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Holt. Moving on to school calendar next, please. This is not a debate at this time, so moving on to school calendar, I'd like to move on because of time. So four thirty, it's four thirty-three, we have still a lot to cover, so let's move on.
So we're gonna turn it over to Eileen and Lauren for a conversation about the school calendar.
So the School Calendar Committee met last week and used the guidance that you all provided us from our previous workshop to set a calendar for not one school year, but two school years. As, just as a reminder, the committee is made up of teachers from each level, administrators, school administrators from each level, associations such as the Bus Driver Association, the V V E A. The Bus Driver Association representative was not able to make it, but we hope that she'll be joining us in our next meeting. We also had student representatives as well as folks from central office. So they got to work last week to come up with calendars, calendar options for the twenty-eighteen, nineteen school year and the nineteen, twenty school year. You will see in general that the biggest difference, we're gonna detail each of the calendar options for you one at a time, but in general, the greatest difference that you will see is that each year, there's one option that has a professional learning day as part of the in-service week, and then the second option does not. The reason that we did this, there was not a firm guidance from the board at the time that we met to necessarily embed it during professional, during in-service week. And some of the feedback from the committee members, the teachers in particular, was that their colleagues in their buildings said that it was, the content was rich and appreciated, but they felt that the timing during in-service week was not the most beneficial. And so we wanted to present you with an option that reflects both that feedback, but also your desire to embed as early as possible in the school year professional learning. So Lauren's gonna walk through the options for each year, and then we'll talk about what our next steps are.
Great. So we'll start with Option One for the twenty-eighteen, nineteen school year. And as Eileen mentioned, they're very similar. They're basically identical with the exception of the professional learning days. As you'll see, Option One, hundred-and-eighty-one instructional days. Again, two embedded professional learning days. This will kind of, this follows the model of what we did this year. One during the in-service week and then another professional learning day taking place on Columbus Day or Monday, October eighth. There is a nine-day winter break. It is allowed three days of travel time before the Christmas holiday. Veterans Day, Martin Luther King Day, and President's Day are all observed. And we did limit those adjusted dismissal days that only use right before holiday breaks and of course during exam week for high school. The key difference for this, this calendar is that you'll see April twelfth, Friday, April twelfth, is you can be used for an extended spring break. So you'll have that Friday as well as the following week. Or if we need be, that gives us an extra day for potential weather makeup if we need it for that. So that is Option One. For Option Two, again, very similar, hundred-and-eighty-one instructional days, two embedded professional learning days. The difference here, the first would take place on Columbus Day, Monday, October eighth. The second would take place Monday, November fifth, which would be right before that staff day, Monday, November sixth election, Tuesday, November sixth election day. So you have a P L day followed by a staff day. Same winter break with the three days of travel time. Veterans Day, Martin Luther King Day, and President's Day would all be observed. Same use of the adjusted dismissal days. You would not have that April twelfth day though, because obviously November fifth is taking the place of that April twelfth date. Are there any questions about the two options for twenty-eighteen, nineteen that we can help answer?
Mr. Edwards?
The, are we locked in for the graduation weeks on the?
We are locked in till nineteen twenty on graduations.
But do we know if, do we know if the convention center is booked on the, booked on the following week?
They, yeah, they give us those dates and then book around them. I've asked, I asked this question before and I was told there were no other times available. I mean, I don't know, I haven't called specifically about this calendar, but I can, but that's what I've been told.
The, the winter break is embarrassingly short. I mean, and I don't know that our, you know, what's everybody else in the region doing? Are you gonna get to that? Okay. I just, I, I just, I'm thinking of, you know, going into that third week of June might be. I mean, right now, particularly in nineteen, we're out on the twelfth of June. That's, that's nice. But we have gone as much as a week later in previous years. So again, it's a matter of what's best for families and the stakeholders and if, you know, but if we're saying we're already boxed out of that, then.
I feel like we are, but I can check.
Okay.
And so with regard to the other divisions, nine days is about the average. There are some years, based on where the holiday actually falls, it might, there, there's, you know, a random year where there's a full two weeks.
I'm seeing like seven and a half or so.
Are you talking about weekends too, including weekends or?
It's a full nine days if you include the weekends of the break.
So we have nine.
Oh, okay.
We have nine. So you have nine days if you.
I think that's seven days.
Seven and a half, that's fine. School days.
Okay.
And you don't wanna have too much time.
Okay, okay.
Nine and ten.
Parents might get upset.
Well, I got that for a ton of the problem.
And I think it's.
But that, if you were, to bring it back, remember we were talking about the fact of the first of, military folks typically have the week of Christmas or the week of New Year's as an option, and that's why we asked to get as much as we could because the people who take that second week of leave, their kids are already back in school, so that kind of boxes them.
And we did make sure the committee considered that request to have three days of travel before the holiday. So that people that needed to head out of town.
And parents have the option, they can make that parental choices.
We're actually kind of lucky because, because of Christmas being on a Tuesday, you know, it allows us to have that weekend ahead.
So one of the things that the committee members find every year is that by the time you lay out the calendar with, when is Labor Day, when are graduations, when is the holiday, when is the winter break, when is spring break, you have very little flexibility of the time that's left in between to still have one-hundred-and-eighty-one days and nine-hundred-and-ninety clock hours. So that's why they're very similar. There are, there are many things that we could do if we weren't within those parameters.
But I do like Option Two. I believe that's the one where.
That's Option One.
No, I'm looking primarily for the professional learning days. I like having those professional learning days on October eighth and October, and November fifth. I like that better. And primarily, my major concern is, you know, being that I taught kindergarten, I taught two sessions. Of course, I know that gradually we're not gonna have two sessions gradually over the years, but there are some teachers that still have it. Plus, there are teachers who do team teaching and they do have more than one class to, to conference parents with. So what I'm thinking is that on the fifth of November, which is the day before elementary teachers normally have their conference days, it's possible that, that later afternoon, after the professional development is over, they could possibly still have some parents come in and possibly get some of their conferences during that time as well. Plus the fact that I think later, after school started, you're more into things and I kind of agree that not having the, our professional development in August is probably a better idea. So, Ms. Riggs?
And I'm agreeing with Option Two because of hearing from teachers and, you know, about this year. They were voicing their concerns. There's so much going on on that work week in August with open houses and parents coming in and kids coming in during the day that maybe it would be better to have it later. And so we tried it this year. I heard a lot of, didn't like it, it didn't work, you know, it was just too much going on. We felt like we, you know, wanted to start school and get a little bit more time, so I kind of like Option Two for that.
Ms. Mallett?
I love the twelfth being part of our spring break. But I'm a little fearful that we might have to use that as a makeup day and then families have planned vacations. And parents have that choice, but then, you know.
It would be available as a makeup day.
Right. And then the question is.
Yeah, I mean.
Anybody with an early ticket wouldn't be there.
Yeah, Ms. Manning?
I, I agree. I like the, the twelfth, that we have that option of a makeup day if needed.
Yeah. I just wonder though, so what do you want to do?
But that's Option, Option One. That's Option One, right?
That's what I'm, I'm dangerous, make your way.
So one of the things that we will ask you after we go through the next year calendar is we would like to have you confirm for us that you want us to post both options for each year for public comment. Or if as a board you decide that there's only one option that you'd like to receive feedback on, then we could certainly make that adjustment as well. But at this time, our plan is to post both options for both years and receive comment and then bring that back to you as well.
So this is for workshop tonight. We're not voting tonight anyway. We're gonna have time to.
No, this is just to make you aware of what options will be posted tomorrow for the Town Hall for Public Comment.
Thank you.
So unless you have other.
But in, to Eileen's point, the, I mean, so last year, there was, there was kind of a general consensus. We wanted to push professional development before the school year started, so it wouldn't have made sense necessarily to put an option out to let people say, we don't like that. But this year, we're hearing a lot of feedback from our teachers saying, really didn't like that. It was just too much early. And so we're, we're thinking the second option should go out so we can get that kind of feedback for you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Edwards?
Will the Town Hall allow for something other than I like one or I like two? I mean, other, other, out of the, you know, out of the box ideas?
So out of, we purposefully have it set up so people say vote for A or B, one or two. Every, every comment is an open-ended box where it says, please leave a comment and provide your feedback. It does not say, tell us which option you like better. And so last year, we'll, you'll remember, we gave you that thousand plus comments. And many of them were, go with Option A, go with Option B, but there were also a significant number of comments that gave specific feedback about days and vacations and half-days and, and travel days and makeup days. And again, one of the comments that we always receive is about the desire for built-in makeup time. So that was something that the committee did try to accomplish with one of the options this year.
Okay.
So now we'll take a quick look at.
Ms. McCloud?
If I may, is the only, so the reason why in the Option One, that it starts on the twenty-fourth of August is because of doing the twelfth with Good Friday off?
And no, that's because it includes a professional learning day within the in-service week.
Because, oh, yeah, yeah.
So you remember this, the current school year, we added the day on Thursday, kept Friday as a flex day and then a full week of in-service that included professional learning. And the feedback overwhelmingly was, we didn't like being there for a day and then having the flex day and then being back. So in this instance, the committee decided to just make Friday a work day and then have a full in-service week the next week, eliminating that, that flex day at the front end.
And then professional learning.
Understood. Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay, so now we'll move on to the nineteen, twenty calendar. And as we get to begin, let me just share that nineteen, twenty is a tighter calendar. And that's because exactly what we talked about a little bit earlier, that depending on where the holidays fall, that sort of thing, worries how your days, impacts how your days fall. So with nineteen, twenty, you'll see again, very similarly, one-hundred-and-eighty-one instructional days. You do have those two embedded professional learning days, again, one during the in-service week and then the second one on Columbus Day, Monday, October fourteenth. You'll have a ten-day winter break here, so there you go, with three days of travel time before Christmas. Again, that's because if you look where Christmas falls, it's right in the middle of the week. Adjusted dismissal days only used before holiday breaks and exam week. And then Veterans Day, Martin Luther King Day, and President's Day are all observed. But we couldn't make that Friday before spring break just because of the number of days and because again, the extra day went to winter break. If you look at Option Two, again, same recommendation as with the second option from eighteen, nineteen, one-hundred-and-eighty-one instructional days. You have the two embedded professional learning days, Columbus Day, Monday, October fourteenth, and then Monday, November fourth, so you have the P L day followed by the staff day. Again, the ten-day winter break, but because you have the P L day on Monday, November fourth, only Veterans Day and Martin Luther King Day could be observed, we would, we would be in school President's Day. The adjusted dismissal days are only used before holiday breaks and exam, and during exam week. And again, that's primarily because Christmas falls on a Wednesday, and so you have a ten-day winter break rather than, it's Wednesday, rather than a nine-day to fill out the, the time at winter break. So you lose that one day for President's Day. A flexibility.
What, explain that again. I still don't understand why we lose President's Day.
Okay, so in the, the first option, you have a professional learning day in the in-service week. So they go to school on, on Monday, at Monday in November, which gives an extra instructional day. But when you use that Monday as a professional learning day, you have to make up that instructional day somewhere else in the calendar. And in order to do that, it needs to be President's Day, or you lose a day of spring break. You could shorten the length of spring break by a day.
Or the winter break.
Or winter break, coming in that Monday, the twenty-third, but that would go against whatever.
Okay, so on Option One, I'm counting eleven days from twenty-one to thirty-one. So is this a sacrilegious question to ask? Do we, is it just cut? Should we have to have a half-day that Friday when Christmas isn't till five?
There's twelve days in Option Two.
It's twelve, carried on to the first.
So in Option One, you're saying on December twentieth, make that a full day?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first is Saturday.
It's just a unique situation with Christmas falling in the middle and the snow floor removed on Friday.
I agree.
The adjusted dismissal on the twentieth, so it still count as a full day, even though it's a just dismissal day. And I think the committee recommends it as a professional courtesy to have that half-day before travel time. Was the, was the comment that you heard? I think that just as it counts. But it's ten days starting.
But you, so you couldn't take that twentieth away and put it for President's Day?
No.
No, correct.
Yes, Ms. McCloud?
Is there a way, I would like for the, the survey to reflect when it is a teacher doing the survey? Or can we keep it separate? The reason why is because of this professional learning day. I, you know, the parents, the, you know, parents aren't going to take that into consideration. So in my opinion, it would be worthwhile to find out really from our staff. Are you hesitant to do that? But you, sees how it could be totally? Yeah.
Also, a fair number of comments last year said whatever the teachers want.
If they could just check, yeah, okay. So, you know, it's a parent taking a survey, teacher taking a survey, parent and teacher as an option.
So we can ask that and they, we are relying on them to answer appropriately, correct? We also have the option that we could send out the link to staff, again, the E-Town Hall is supposed to start tomorrow. We could send it out to staff tomorrow and allow them twenty-four hours that we have not released it to parents yet. Just also asking them, are you a teacher? Are you a parent? But then giving it to them in advance of releasing it to the general public. We could do either of those or both. So yes is the answer. The short answer is yes.
Well, because, I mean, if they're a parent, they're gonna take it again anyway. Yes, I think they're signed. Yeah, that's right.
So.
Ma'el, I'm sorry, I had, I, I do have a suggestion though on Option Two.
Which year?
For twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. I noticed that there is a staff day on March thirtieth. And I'm just wondering, and this is mainly because there are so many military-connected. And I'm just wondering, and this is mainly because there are so many military-connected children in our in our school division whose parents will have President's Day off. So I'm wondering if we could possibly move that staff day on March thirtieth to President's Day.
So that staff day aligns with the end of the grading period?
Okay.
So otherwise, your nine weeks would be tremendously off.
Okay, all right. I just wondered what what that was and and if there was possibility of that, okay.
To do great. So just as a reminder, before we go from here, the E-Town Hall will go live tomorrow. And that will be active for two weeks, allowing for input. And then the calendar committee will come back together on the thirtieth to review that feedback, to make any adjustments that they see fit to the calendar uh recommendations. And then we'll discuss and uh bring a recommendation to the superintendent for his review and review by senior leadership. And then uh it will come back to you all again with uh with the feedback that we've received from the E-Town Hall. We always provide that to you as well in advance. Uh and then we're scheduled to have you all uh be before you for information on November eighth. And then you all uh tentatively scheduled to vote and take action on November twenty-first.
Thank you. So next on the agenda, are we finished? Next on the agenda, leave regulations. Oh, we did talk about, okay, I'm sorry. We might wanna make a s- a small adjustment here, and the reason is because uh we do have some staff here that are over from the city, that they brought over for our closed session. So I was wondering, instead of having closed session after all of this, could we go ahead and jump to closed session now? And then if we have any unfinished um like leave regulations or reversion funds, could we possibly do that later or what do you all suggest? Uh it was just a suggestion that we go ahead and to close now since we have.
We're happy to, we're happy to do leave regulations after, I mean, because frankly, it's gonna be complicated enough to really warrant full attention.
Okay.
Okay.
Um is would would, Fair, how long do you need for revert? Probably not long, I would think. Could we do that?
So could we possibly do that then, reversion and then go into closed?
Sure.
We don't want the staff to have to go out and come back in this afternoon.
Okay, right, right.
That's okay.
So we're gonna go to the office and get some. We may have to do leave regulations later.
You okay with that? Okay, yeah, that's good.
So let's just jump to reversion.
Okay, reversion funds now, and then we can go into clothes.
We should, we should.
Ten or twenty. Ten to get ready.
I'm supposed to turn it off for.
Yeah, thank you, John. Hi, good afternoon, uh Chairwoman Anderson, Plush Chair Edwards and members of the school board, Dr. Spence and my colleagues in the audience. It's that time of year, the annual um discussion of the prior year's reversion. The uh year ended June thirtieth, so the numbers we're gonna share with you reflect our year-end close. It reflects our true-up with the city, uh regarding any revenues that came in above or below the revenue sharing amounts. Uh and then any reversions from the different funds we have. So I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly. This is set up so you can see uh the amounts. And then as I get down to the spreadsheet, we'll start subtracting amounts and I'll show you cumulative balance. Trying to make it a little bit easier for you. This year, we had uh five hundred and sixty-two thousand uh plus uh in the athletic fund that became reversion. In past years, we've been able to keep that in the athletic fund. Uh city staff uh and Kami got involved and had Crystal involved. And uh it it was determined that the city wanted us to revert it. But city manager was uh indicated that he would have no problem asking, for us asking for it to be re-appropriated to the athletic fund. So that's how we're gonna handle that. We have to set up and have set up a green run collegiate budget in a separate fund because of the charter designation for it. And because it's a separate fund and it's not a part of the traditional operating budget, we have to account for it separately. So this was the aversion, reversion amount for the green run collegiate. So it goes into the the block of money for the operating fund, and you'll see that in a minute. So the subtotal, uh including the big reversion amount of sixteen million, one forty-one in the in the one fifteen fund, the operating budget, that gives us seventeen million, sixty-three thousand dollars to ask, intended to ask the city to reappropriate those funds. Uh in addition to that, uh this information came to us uh late. The city was in the process of closing all of its funds. Um and the city doesn't always share with us where they are in this process unless they're projecting that there's a shortfall in the reversion, and they would let us, they typically would let us know late summer if that was happening. So this was a pleasant surprise. So that gives us, you add that to the reversion amount, um and we've got twenty million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars to ask for those funds to be re- re- reappropriated by the city council. First of all, we're gonna ask you to approve the spending plan for this. And then we'll con- we'll convert that spending plan into a resolution uh in which we'll bring back to you at the next board meeting for information. So the first recommendation, you are aware that we uh used eight million, uh eight hundred thousand dollars to balance our budget. That's what we took out of the special reversion, reserve, re- reverse?
Reserve.
Reserve fund. Uh and so that reduces uh the cumul- the the amount to the, to eleven million, three fifty-four. The next uh recommendation we're making is we wanna appropriate that five hundred and eighty-two thousand of the athletic fund back to the athletic fund. We wanna put it back in the athletic fund. Next recommendation is to uh recommend nine hundred thousand to be uh appro- uh appropriate, appro- re-appropriated to the CIP. If you recall, we originally brought your resolution to take the nine hundred thousand from the unspent uh kindergarten money. And once we got, we didn't know at the time that we were gonna get additional three million dollars. Once we got that, had a call from the city manager, a call from a couple of city staff. There was a bit of confusion of why are you bringing a reso- a re- a resolution out of sequence? We we haven't done that in fact. So the most efficient way for us to deal with that was just make that a part of this. We had the additional three million dollars that we really weren't counting on. So I asked and I sent everyone an email. I asked the city manager to bring, to 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 pull that agenda item from the city council's agenda. So we're we're recommending to use part of the reversion money for those, their two CIP projects. This uh recommendation is to purchase, it's thirty uh replacement school buses plus one replacement brand-new engine, which is about sixty-six thousand dollars. So that's what these monies would fund. That moves us closer to funding our uh our annual required replacement cycle, but not quite. Next recommendation, we have significant needs to uh replace and to add to our special education buses. This, we purchased twenty uh special education buses. They're slightly, not slightly, they're a good bit more expensive than a regular school bus because of the additional handicap uh items that have to be installed on those buses. Um.
Yay.
Yay.
We uh, this is a new item. Uh we uh now understand that we can uh, we can transport students in in certain vans. Uh this would, we believe significantly reduce the amount we're having to pay taxicabs uh to implement the federal requirements that we move those homeless kids back to their school. In addition, we have some students that are in outlier areas like around, not uh, yeah, way south.
Greens, greens, outside.
They're just way out there in places. Uh these vans could also uh be used to transport some of those students to the academies. Instead of taking a full school bus, it sometimes only have one or two students.
Exactly.
How many vans?
How many?
Yeah. How many vans?
Uh we're not sure yet. It depends on how we have to equip them. I think those vans are gonna be around thirty thousand dollars, but we're not sure yet. We we're gonna have to, we'll go out with an RFP, but can't tell you exactly right now. We've got a an aging white fleet. Those are the maintenance trucks and and pieces of equipment that our plant folks drive. Um some of them have two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand miles on them, so this is just the needed replacement of those aging and in many cases, out-of-service vehicles. In addition to that, you know, we share a landscaping uh services program with the city. Um we've got to periodically pay our fair share of replacing. I think this replaces about five big trucks and some things that the landscaping services department has to have and need, and so um it's our year to to at least provide our fair share of those replacement vehicles. We don't have to do this every year, but we we are gonna have to do it periodically. Uh there is a significant need, and and this is not all of it, uh to replace uh our infrastructure, our technology infrastructure, or upgrade our technology in- infrastructure. This is for about four items. It's very technical, but I'll give you a flavor of what it is. A new connects production, which is storage servers uh purchased in four nine nodes. An a Bradford upgrade, which is a security tool, that's about two hundred thousand dollars. A Nutra- Root, Nutrionics test development expansion, um that's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Uh an upgrade, and this is significant, to our external firewall security issue. That's about four hundred thousand. I think that was the amount that made up this this total amount. And and that, Remesh, that's not all that you gave me, but this is what we wanna move forward now. Those were respective of the priority that you set you wanted to be done first. Um this is a continuation of our one-on-one initiative. Um and that will allow us to uh purchase, um let me see, about thirty, four hundred more Chromebooks. And it will allow us to increase uh those, the coverage in this program at the three or four more schools. Again, our continued efforts to do the copier replacements. Um this is pretty, getting pretty close to um amount that we would need to do about every year instead of, you know, a million here and a million that. We're trying to get to a point where we can, we can get it to a to a stabilized number and then try to build that in the operating budget in the future. Same uh kinda thing. This is kind of a new thing. We got aging whiteboards out there. So this is the first-year initiative to begin to chip away at that. That's a significant investment overtime. Uh Remesh tells me you really need about a million, million one a year, so this is a start. Uh this is a E-rate match. Uh it will be matched uh with about six hundred thousand dollars. So it's a sixty, forty. We do forty and we get uh six hundred thousand or so from the federal government. And that will, so we we leverage uh an additional six hundred thousand by offering up the match. And the final one, and this one was discussed with you back in the retreat. Uh it allows us to at least begin at one designated high school, uh putting lights on a baseball softball field. And I believe that's it. So happy to answer any questions.
Ms. McLeod.
Um I wanna clarify concretely that this is in addition to the first phase in year of kindergarten. So we're getting, this is extra bonus.
What what that, what this does.
Cause these were similar numbers and that made me start getting suspicious, sorry.
The nine hundred thousand that we had initially earmarked to be transferred to the CIP will now be freed up and we will have that nine hundred thousand to be used. And we'll bring another uh some information back about how we're gonna use that additional nine hundred thousand.
But it'll be in the target areas that we're in the transmitter.
Okay, I just wanna make sure this was supplemental to that.
Supplemental.
Four-point, whatever.
Right.
Thank you.
Ms. Wayne.
I'm assuming this does nothing to the phase in of full-day kindergarten, and can you refresh my memory? Are we on the two or three-year?
One, three.
Three-year mark for that and this is?
That's on track and our spending plan that we originally presented to you, that's what we're doing right now.
Okay, so three-year and this is extra and that stays the same.
Yeah, these are just reversion dollars.
Right, okay, yeah.
And these are reversion dollars from last year.
Actually, actually, our our kindergarten plan was, is a five-year plan, correct?
No.
Five-year implementation.
We, we have funding for three years.
Right, right, three, for three years. Ms. Manning.
And just a a quick question. I wasn't here for the resolution last week, but I've, you know, I read your email and everything. Just a procedural question, since the board voted to make that happen, it's been pulled back. I mean, procedurally, it doesn't seem like we've done the right thing here. Do we need to vote again?
Mr. Edwards.
I I think the wording in the resolution, in this resolution that we'll be uh acting on in the next meeting or two should address that so that it's clear that, you know, and and I'm, and I mentioned that to the the Chairwoman, that, you know, we don't want it set up so that uh that something we formally passed would 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 uh just fall through the cracks.
Right.
Uh even even though it was formally done with staff to staff, from a protocol standpoint, I think we need to sustain it. If we pass it, but we can, I think, put an appropriate wording in here that says, you know, that that sort of backs that off and it says that that requirement's addressed within these.
And and it and it has been done in the past. Um and it's not, this is not the first time. But it there have been an occasion where board had intended for the agenda to take and it was pulled back.
Okay. Ms. Holt.
I wanted to ask, when we talked about start, school times, the lights had a factor in that, so is this the beginning?
Would be the beginning, I think, Daniel, uh it's it's three uh.
So how many more s- high schools do we need?
It was eight million dollars total.
We got to remember that.
It was eight million, you told us to do all of them.
So this is a chipping away at it.
Eight more only.
Okay. So we look forward to that every year.
Ten more.
Thank you.
We have like ten schools.
Madam Chairman, that, Chairwoman, that's our recommendations and uh we would uh bring that back for information to you on the following meeting. Assuming that you would be okay, once we do that, maybe. Um, assuming that you would be okay, once we do that, maybe then ask you in that same, same meeting to take it to the actual agenda. And that way, we could go ahead and get it to the city in a couple of weeks.
Right.
Good.
Is there any objection, Mr. McDonald?
I do not have an objection with that, but I have a question. Uh, is it possible before, or as part of, uh, information, to get an updated table similar to what we have in, uh, our budget doc of our unmet needs showing updated numbers that roll in the, uh, funding, the additional funding for the full-day kindergarten and this, so we can see where we are?
Yes, uh, and I apologize. I have, uh, we started on, uh, updated unmet needs, and it just hasn't been updated, and we will absolutely get that back to you.
Great, that'd be helpful. I appreciate it.
Thank you. That would, that would be very helpful.
Thank you, Pharaoh.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, at this time, I think we're ready to, to roll into some, uh, to, uh,
Close.
a closed session. And then we'll go, we'll come back to leave regulations, um, after the formal meeting.